But it can be a little time consuming, so, um, planning for that and getting it done on time, your supervisors will be much happier with you. It'll be a, a lot easier road. Um, but that's how, and I like looking at the AIMS data across all, all of the CMHCs because I can see, oh wow, we're doing amazing in this, or oh wow, we, we're not great in this area. And then we, we try to change up interventions and things to improve that. So, okay, so now something really cool, really fun. I love being able to talk about collaborative documentation. Um, and so in, in the next five to 10 minutes, let's see if your, what your thoughts, what your thoughts are right now and then what they-
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Welcome to the October 23 Metropolitan Area Planning Commission meeting. I am chairperson, Brian Fry. Uh, just a quick heads up, Tuesday's council meeting went nearly 10 hours. We hope not to repeat that today. So, if anybody was at Tuesday's council meeting, it was a long one. So, today we are going to go through our agenda real quick. Um, but first we'll start with opening announcements. Mr. Waddell, if you could roll the tape.
... All this information, tell me about your hospitalization.
Before we begin the agenda, the Wichita Sedgwick County Metropolitan Area Planning Commission and the Wichita Sedgwick County Board of Zoning Appeals would like to take this opportunity to welcome everyone to this public hearing. For those in attendance, copies of the agenda for today's meeting, the public hearing procedure, and planning department staff reports on all agenda items are available in the lobby. The planning commissions and the BZAs bylaws limit the applicant on a zoning, subdivision, or variance application and his or her representatives to a total of 10 minutes of speaking time at the start of the hearing on that item, plus up to two minutes at the conclusion of that hearing. All other persons wishing to speak on agenda items are limited to three minutes per person. However, if they feel that it is needed and justified, the chairman may extend these times by up to two minutes. All speakers are requested to state his or her name and address for the record when beginning to speak. When you are finished speaking, please share your name, address, and the case number on the sheet provided in the room. This will enable staff to notify you if there are any additional proceedings concerning that item. All speakers at the podium, please remove your face mask before speaking into the microphone. Please note that all written and visual materials you present to the commission and the board will be retained by the secretary as part of the official record. If you are not speaking, but you wish to be notified about future proceedings on a particular case, please provide your contact information to the planning department. The planning commission and the board are interested in hearing the views of all persons who wish to express themselves on all the agenda items. However, we ask that all speakers please be as courteous and concise as possible and avoid long repetitions of facts or opinions which have already been stated. For your information, the Wichita City Council has adopted a policy for all city zoning items. A copy of this policy is available from the planning staff. The city council relies on a written record of the planning commission hearings and does not conduct its own additional public hearings on these items. The decision of the BZA is final. Any appeal of a decision of the BZA is to the district court.
All right. Next item is roll call of members present. Mr. Waddell?
My note's done and I'm happy. And then we have a plan.
I don't think any of them are...
Is it agreed upon?
There we go.
Let's try it again. All right. So, yes, sir. Fry?
Present.
Mater.
Here.
McKay.
Here.
Dool.
Here.
Bill Johnson.
Present.
Hi.
Here.
Nix.
Here.
Cluntz.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Joe Johnson is absent. Miles.
Present.
Simbleman.
Here.
Aldrich.
Here.
Williams Bay.
Here.
Sir, I show 13 members are present.
Thank you. Next item is 1.3, the approval of the prior MAPC meeting minutes from October 9th. I show that all members were present.
They've approved.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner McKay with a second by Commissioner Miles. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Now we, item number 1.4 is determination of MAPC consent items. Uh, for the public, this is where we go through the agenda and see which items we can hear by consent. So, the first item is subdivision committee recommendations, 2.1, sub 2025-53, a one-step final plat for the courtyards at Jacobs Farm, 3rd Edition, 131st Street West and West 4th Street North, which most people know as West Central. Um, is there anyone from the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none. Is there anyone from the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item 2.1 to consent.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve items 2.1. Second.
We have a motion to approve 2.1 by Commissioner Bill Johnson with a second by Commissioner John Williams Bay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Vacation items, uh, case 3.1, vacation 2025-38 has been deferred to November 13th, 2025. So if anyone was here expecting to hear that case, you'll need to come back in November. Uh, item 3.2, vacation 2025-42, a vacation request in the city for a building setback, West 21st Street and North...
...
Hi... Thank you. I should know how to say that. I've lived here my entire life. Good gosh. Is there anyone from the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing, uh, from the commission, I'm sorry. Uh, seeing none. Is there anyone from the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item 3.2 to consent.
Mr. Chairman, I move item 3.1.
Oh, 3.2, I'm sorry. We have a motion by Commissioner Bill Johnson to approve item 3.2, um, with a second by Commissioner McKay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Now the public hearing items. Case number 4.1, uh, zone 2025-41 with a CUP 2025-29. Uh, this is for a zone request in the city from SF5 to LC and to create a CUP for commercial development, East 21st Street North and North 143rd Street East. Are there any members on the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none. Is there anyone from the public who would like to hear this case? I see a couple of raised hands. Great. Is the applicant or agent available for this case? Thank you. We will hear item 4.1. Item 4.2, conditional 2025-129, a conditional request in the city to allow vehicle and equipment sales on US 54 and Southeastern Avenue. Are there any members from the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none. Are there any members from the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item 4.2 to consent. Item 4.3 is a PUD 2025-22, zone change request in the city from SF5 and LC to PUD, to create, uh, a new PUD, uh, South Hoover Road and 47th Street South. Are there any members on the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none. Are there any members, anyone from the public who would like to hear this case? I see a raised hand. Is the applicant or agent present for this case? Thank you. We will hear item 4.3. Item 4.4, zone 2025-42, um, this is to, uh, zone change request from SF5 to LC, West 55th Street South and South Seneca Street. Um, staff is recommending denial, so we will hear this case. My question is, is the applicant or agent present?
It's how I'm interacting because it's really-
Okay, so they have a little bit of time to get here still, but we will hear the case because staff is recommending denial. Item 4.5, uh, zone 2025-44, uh, zone change request in the city from SF5 and LI to an, to a total LI district, uh, North Hillside and K96. Are there any members from the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none. Are there any members from the public who would like to hear this case?
Yes.
Okay. Is the applicant or agent present for this case? Thank you. We will hear item 4.5. Item 4.6, uh, zone 2025-45, zone change request from SF5 to GC, West 135th Street South and US Highway 54. Are there any members from the commission who would like to hear this case? Seeing none. Are there any members from the public who would like to hear this case? Seeing none, we'll move item 4.6 to consent.
Move to approve agenda items 4.2 and 4.6.
Thank you. We have a, I, motion from Commissioner Miles to approve 4.2 and 4.6 on consent with a second by Commissioner Williams Bay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. So, now we are back to our first, uh, case, which would be 4.1, zone 2025-41 with CUP 2025-29. Brad?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Uh, Brad Etherly with MAPD. We are discussing case CUP 2025-00029 with ZON 2025-00041. Uh, for this case, the applicants are requesting two items. One is to create the East Side Community Church, uh, Commercial CUP, which would be DP 365, and also to rezone, uh, from SF5 to LC, a limited commercial. Uh, subject site is, uh, 10.9 acres in size and is located on the northwest corner of East 21st Street North and North 143rd Street East. Um, the applicants are requesting the zone change, uh, to permit all uses allowed by right in the LC District except for, uh, limited number of uses that are, um, within the, the staff report, but I'll go ahead and spell them out as well. Sexually oriented business, nightclub in the city, nightclub in the county, and tavern and drinking establishments. Restaurants that serve liquor can be developed and may serve liquor as long as food is a primary service of the establishment. Entertainment establishments may be allowed only as an accessory to a restaurant and subject to the special use regulations found in the, uh, zoning code. Staff recommends removing nightclub in the county because the subject site is within the city limits of Wichita. Um, the applicants propose that parcel five would exclude multifamily development, uh, but single family and, um, duplexes would be allowed but would be limited to single story dwellings. Uh, landscaping is proposed to be in accordance with the City of Wichita Landscape Code. A 15-foot landscape buffer along the north and west lines of parcels one and, uh, through three, and the west property line of parcel five, uh, is also proposed, uh, with landscaping being required at a rate of 1.5 times the, uh, tree calculation than the, uh, than the landscape code. Um, and as parcels develop along the arterial, arterial roadways, landscaped street yards with parking lot screening would also be required. As far as parking goes, it's proposed to be in accordance with the UCC. Uh, solid screening is proposed, um, along the north property line of parcel five where adjacent to residential uses. Signage is proposed to be in accordance within the city, with the City of Wichita Sign Code with, uh, several exceptions. And I'll just kind of point out that, uh, the two biggest ones are, uh, number two, parcel four would be allowed a maximum of two signs with combined area of 240 square feet along North 143rd Street East, and no one sign would be permitted to be larger than 180 square feet. And that, uh, number five, all freestanding signs for parcel four would be allowed to be monument or pole-type signs and shall have a minimum height of 28 feet. Um, no specific zoning designation is given, so if the CUP is approved with this language, signage would be in accordance with the LC District. Uh, however, staff does recommend adding a provision that flashing signs, uh, except for signs showing only time, temperature, and other public service messages, uh, rotating, moving signs, signs with moving lights or signs with, which create illusions of movement, not be permitted. And, uh, the proposed general provisions conform to the, uh, Sign Code except for provision number six, um, which in order to allow a sign to have a maximum, a maximum height higher than 25 feet, staff is recommending, uh, allowing for only one sign on parcel four. Um, as far as zoning goes, if we can go to the zoning map. Properties to the north are zoned SF5 and are developed with single-family dwellings. Properties to the east are zoned SF5 and LC and are developed with agricultural uses. The LC zone property is part of CUP DP 351, is outside the city limits of Wichita. Properties to the south, um, are zoned LC, are part of, uh, DP 302 and are undeveloped. Uh, other property within DP 302 is developed with a multifamily residential. And properties to the west are zoned SF5 and are developed with a church and single-family dwellings. Um, as far as case history goes, the, uh, site was platted in 2004 as part of the East Side Community Church 2nd Edition, and 2003, an application for a zone change from SF20 to LC was, uh, along with creating a CUP was, was made. However, the application for both requests were withdrawn, uh, before any final decision could be made. Um, as far as public services go, the subject site has access to East 21st Street North and North 143rd Street East. Uh, sidewalk is provided along East 21st Street North. City services such as, uh, sanitary sewer and water do serve the site, and Wichita Transit does not provide service at the site. As far as, uh, the plans and policies go, if we can go to the future growth map. The requested zone change in CUP is in partial conformance with the Community Investments Plan. Um, the future growth map identifies the majority of the area to be appropriate for residential unemployment mix, which is defined as areas of land that likely will be developed with uses predominantly of a mixed nature due to the proximity of higher intensity business uses. Residential housing types within this area likely will be higher density. Also, due to the proximity of residential uses, employment uses will likely have limited negative impacts associated with noise, hazardous submissions, visual blight, and odor. So the proposed zoning and the uses permitted in the proposed CUP do align with the future growth concept map. Uh, the locational guidelines, under the heading Development Pattern, Guideline 1C states that major commercial and employment centers should be located at intersections of arterial streets. Um, and, uh, under Development Pattern, Guideline 3B, this, it states major commercial development should be guided to the intersection of two arterial streets. So, the proposed zoning and permitted uses are compatible, uh, with the request. Um, however, under the same heading, Guideline 3D states that low-density residential uses should be buffered from commercial and industrial areas by open space, water bodies, changes in topography, or major barriers such as arterial streets or highways. And in this case, there are no such barriers between, um, the single-family development to the north and the proposed commercially used properties, except for the screening and landscape requirements provided for in the CUP. Um, if we can go to the site pics. This is looking west into the site. Next picture. This is looking north into the site. Next picture. This is looking north away from the site. Next picture. This is looking east away from the site. Next picture. This is looking south away from the site, and I think that might be it. Uh, looking west away from the site at the church. I believe that is the final picture. So, um, staff does recommend the zone change from SF5 to LC and the creation of the East Side Community Church Commercial, um, CUP be approved, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. I will, uh, say that the public, uh, provided plenty of comment for this, uh, which has been presented to you. Um, and in recent days, I know that the developer and the community have met together to kind of hash out some ideas. And, um, I just did want to point out that I did receive about three or four emails of, uh, of people who had previously opposed. They changed their mind to support the, the, um, the development. So, um, there are still several that opposed, but I did want to mention that there were a couple that did support. Um, and with that, I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, Brad. Does any commission members have questions for staff? Mr. Williams Bay?
Yes, Brad. Uh, the, uh, CUP was so small, I couldn't really read it. Could, could you, are there any architectural controls with this?
No, sir, there are not.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dool.
Has there been a stormwater drainage plan approved for this?
It, it looks like, uh, Philip is, is got an answer on that one.
So the property is platted, and so they had to turn one in during that time. However, given the future development, there's likely going to be a replat or some level of reanalysis based on new impervious surface, so that will have to be changed as development moves forward. But we can, um, default to the agent. They could probably provide more information about the future plans. But even at the time of building permit, they do review onsite drainage and whether or not it conforms with the plan or if changes need to be made.
Did I see another hand over here? Commissioner May, or Hi.
Are traffic studies part of this process?
No, they are not.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Seeing none. Thank you, Brad. We'll now ask the applicant and/or agent to come forward. You'll have up to 10 minutes for your presentation, and please give us your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. Phil Meyer with Baughman Company, agent for the applicant 315 Ellis is our address. With me here today is Evan Leroux, who is the developer contract purchaser for the commercial CUP that you're looking to approve today, or we're hoping you approve today. Um, I also have Brian Clerkland with me, who is with Miracle Sign Company. Um, he's representing a contract purchaser on parcel four, and we want to talk a little bit about signage when we get to parcel four. Thank you. Mind readers, I was going to ask you, go back to page 10, and they did. So that's, that's perfect. This was supposed to be on your last planning commission meeting. Uh, we did defer this so we could have, um, it was two meetings ago, I believe. We did defer this so we could have a meeting with the neighborhood because we got the first staff report with all the letters and concerns. Um, the church had people, neighbors calling them direct. Evan did a great job, Evan Leroux did a great job of meeting with the neighbors, um, trying to resolve some of their concerns. The one thing that we did do, so originally this was parcel six that sat here, um, we agreed that we would do a single-family cul-de-sac here, so all the existing residential lots would back up to residential. We had apartments as an allowed use on that parcel six. That was a concern for the, um, neighborhood. We did agree in those negotiations that we would limit, um, multifamily uses in parcel five. We did allow single family. Not our intent to do single family. Our intent is to do commercial, but we know that parcels one through four are going to develop first, and five is probably a ways out before the development occurs along 143rd. So, we built in a little bit of flexibility on parcel five. Again, if you have, but when we met with the, we had a voluntary neighborhood meeting at the church, we probably had 60 to 80 residences, residence denses from that subdivision there. And I think you're going to hear from a couple today, but the majority of them seemed to be comfortable with this solution. And again, I did get copied on some emails that were sent to Brad that showed support from the neighborhood for the revisions that we have proposed on this. So if I can, I want to talk about signage for a minute, specifically about parcel four. Um, parcel four, the sign that we plan is going to be a fin, there's a contract on parcel four for a financial institution. And the sign that they have built around town at multiple locations is a LED sign, um, that you see in today a lot on commercial developments. And we are going to ask you to please remove item 6G, which is the one about flashing, flashing signs, rotating moving signs. It really does not, that language is old language and really does not fit, um, in our opinion, just fit the signs that are occurring today with, with LED signs. And a lot of those have a lot of visual images on those signs. Um, and that's always going to be a conflict or an interpretation problem. So we would like to remove 6G. We filed it without it. The other thing was probably my fault. Um, parcel four, 6A, we would like you to approve it the way that we submitted it, which if you look at the staff report, it's what was redlined through. So, we would like it to read a maximum of two signs with a, with a, and combined area of 240 square foot of signage with one side, one sign allowed along 21st Street, one sign allowed along 143rd. No sign is, is permitted to be larger than 180 square feet. So where I probably made my mistake, staff asked me they'd allow it to go 28 foot. If I was willing to make it one sign instead of two, I agreed to that because that's where I thought we needed to go. I'm okay if the sign along 21st Street, we'd like to be 28 feet tall. It would be the one with a maximum of 180. I think this financial institution would still like a second line, sign along 143rd. We are okay with that one being restricted to 25 foot if that pleases the planning commission. Um, but we'd like you to approve it with those two sign revisions. Other than that, we're in agreement with staff comments, and I will stand for any questions you may have.
Philip, thank you. Uh, well, first question is on that parcel four signage, are you saying that you'd like it to read a maximum of two signs with a combined area of 240 square feet of signage?
Yes.
Is that what you're comfortable with?
Yes. Just as we had, the way that it's marked through was the way that we filed it. We'd like to go back to the way that we filed it. If you guys are more comfortable knocking down the height of that second sign, I'm okay with that.
Right, but as requested, it doesn't even put a restriction on the height, other than Sign Code?
Um, F deals with the height of the-
F does?
F deals with the height-
Thank you.
-of the sign.
Okay. So we'd have to adjust F to read all freestanding signs on parcel four, not just the one sign then?
That would be true. Which we can work through that. If you point staff in the direction, Brad and I can figure it out.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Williams Bay?
Yes, uh, Phil, did you, did you, could you repeat the height of the sign that you're requesting?
28 feet high for the sign along 21st Street.
Correct for the second one?
Uh, 25 at the, oh, the 20s, okay. I stand corrected. 20 foot would be fine for the second one. I said 25. I misread that. 20s, 20 is what the rest are.
Good, good catch. Anyone else from the commission? Seeing none? Uh, stand by, Phil. I'm sure there'll be an opportunity for-
I think I'll be back. Yep.
Okay. So before I open it up to public comment, I'd like to see a show of hands. How many people wish to speak on this item? One? Is that just one? Okay. All right, great. Uh, please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Thank you. Um, my name is Tracy Organ. I live at 20, 2434 North Springdale Circle, um, right on the cul-de-sac that abuts, um, right, right. I live right down on this area.
Okay, thank you.
Um, my, my biggest, um, argument with this- My, my biggest argument with this whole plan is along 143rd Street, really the only traffic on that street is for the neighborhood of Chestnut Bridge. There isn't, there isn't just random traffic going from point A to B. It's all from that neighborhood. So number one, I don't really understand why there would need to be a sign for any business on 143rd, but that's, that's for later, I suppose. We're talking about an area here that's highlighted now, I think this is about six, six acres, is that about right, what we're talking about, what's left between parcels one through five? You can see a little bit, right here is the beginning of a tree line, a very significant established tree line that starts here, that runs all the way up for, I don't know, at least a half a mile, that supports all the backyards of the neighborhood along 143rd. I know all these trees would be torn out, and that's very upsetting to me, so I would like that to be considered in this rezoning. Also, I read the rezoning of parcel five, which is about this area right here, this area right here. It said that the, that the limited commercial could be 35 feet high in, in whatever type of building is, is put there, whether it's some type of retail business or a business or duplexes or, you know, whatever. I think that would just be very damaging for the aesthetic of, of our neighborhood and our small pothole-filled, not really pothole-filled, big dips in our county road right here. It's county on the east side and city on the west side of 143rd. Part of my other argument is this frontage right here, and I think it's about 13 acres right on 21st Street, is already zoned, that was changed about four years ago. This is already zoned, limited commercial right here. This is private property right here. This right here, and I don't know how many acres this is, is also zoned, limited commercial. Do we really need three corners here that are limited commercial?
Ms. Organ, your time is allotted. Can you wrap up with one final sentence?
I strongly oppose the zoning changes at, at the very minimum parcel five in this area right here. I think it would be a detriment to our suburban neighborhood with green space and trees.
Thank you. Any questions for our speaker? Seeing none, thank you, ma'am. Okay, I saw no other hands raised, is that still the case? Okay, we'll return it back to the applicant for rebuttal. You'll have up to two minutes.
Phil Meyer with Baughman Company. I think if you look through that 96-page or 98-page staff report and all the opposition letters, and I understand some people are still opposed to this, but we did satisfy a lot of the concerns of this existing neighborhood with our subdivision that we're willing to put into this property. This, to answer one of the planning commissioners' questions to staff, this will take a drainage plan, we will have to go through the plating process, we will replat the CUP, not the church, but the CUP. When we do that, that will, is when we look at the drainage, that is when we will look at traffic, traffic improvements, access controls, all of those items that will determine how this develops out at the end of the day. So I wanted to point that out to you, then I would remind you that we do have Evan Leroux, if you've got questions as a developer, or Brian Kirkland, if you've got specific questions about our signage requests, we'd be glad to answer your guys' questions.
I do have a follow-up question related to item 6G, the flashing signs. Are you okay with that restricting it to just parcel four? Or were you asking that for all of the parcels to have flashing LED signs?
I'm
Because by striking it, that would now allow it for every parcel.
If you removed that from parcel four and you left it on the other parcels, we can live with that? I'm just, yeah, no, that's good. We're good with that.
Okay.
I just still would personally think that language is kind of outdated and needs to be updated
I understand, I think just the
But I appreciate the compromise, and we can live with that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Zimbalman.
Hey, Phil, and the description, it says the applicant proposes that parcel five would exclude multifamily, that single-family dwellings and duplexes would be limited to a single-story building. But in the PUD, it says you can go up 35 feet on parcel five.
Unless, yes.
Need to be in there or not?
We agreed, so this started with parcel six, which is now gone and was a single-family, is now the single-family. We agreed with the neighborhood that we would make that single-story residential. And then we ended up just totally taking it out of the CUP. They didn't want two-story duplexes or two-story single-family in there. And as a compromise, we carried that down into parcel five. So the limit to single-story is for the single-family or two-family dwelling that could occur on parcel five, not the LC.
Okay.
That was my intent.
And just for clarification, single-family residential can be up to 35 feet.
It can, it can, yeah.
Yeah. So, and all of the parcels are showing no higher than 35 feet, correct?
Correct.
So they would match the existing SF5 and the surrounding neighborhoods? Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams Bay.
Phil, are you planning on adding any architectural controls to the CUP?
We were not planning on adding any architectural control. I think, and I don't want to, I'm going to speak for staff, and I'm going to let them correct me. I think staff is tired of dealing with architectural control and the headache it causes them on every parcel when every architect wants to come in and adjust it. So they are tired of it, and I chose not to put it in there because my, most of my developers don't want to deal with it either, so I just took it out.
Okay, thank you.
If I could.
Yes.
So Scott Wade, old planning department. I think Phil's correct, I just want to add a little bit more color to that, and that is, we're, we're fine if there's design constraints that are placed in there, but we want it to be things that can be measured easily and are not subjective. And so a lot of the ones that were approved in the past, they are subjective, they have to, they say they have to be similar to surrounding uses, et cetera. Well, it's all, all in the eye of the beholder. We're looking for something that says this percentage brick, this percentage stucco, whatever it is, something that can be measured. So unless it's very detailed and it comes in easily, something that we can evaluate, we'd prefer not to have to wrestle with something that's very subjective.
Commissioner Miles.
So I just want to clarify to, just to make sure that, that I have a full understanding. So although there is some limited commercial in this PUD, most of this that will be residential development, is, is that correct?
Can I have page 10 put back up on the, the screen? This is going to be the easiest way to me to answer that for you.
That would be the CUP drawing.
So to start, everything within the CUP, we intend to be non-residential development. Parcels one through four specifically will be commercial, and we hope parcel five is commercial. We did build in single-family and two-family to parcel five, just in case we get down the road and we're not able to develop parcel five. But our intent today is to tell you that all, one through five will all be limited commercial development, and we gave up parcel six and turned it into single-family as a, as a buffer to the neighborhood to the north and west.
Commissioner Mater?
Yep.
I don't think your mic's hot. There we go. One of the issues that is traffic, always traffic, always traffic. Do you know anything, and I know it's outside of your controls, but conversations, the future of paving and redevelopment for the 143rd Street?
So during the plating process, the traffic engineering department will look at the existing condition of 143rd and may or may not put conditions on what we do to 143rd for development, for access to that. And then to answer your question, at some point in time, City of Wichita will put that into their CIP program for improvement project from 21st to 29th. I just don't know when that would be, but that's a standard answer. They review all arterials once a year.
Commissioner Dool.
Just a comment, if I recall, fairly recently, we approved directly north of this at 143rd and 29th for some residential development, and it was, that's in the county currently, and it was proposed that it would be annexed into Wichita, and that 143rd along with that would be part of Wichita.
All right. Any other questions from the commission? Seeing none, thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
Bring it back for discussion and consideration. Mr. Commissioner Aldrich.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the zone 2025-004 with the CUP 2025-00029 with the revisions on, regarding the sign code A with partial four, also revise partial F per the applicant's comments, and also the revision, if you will, on G pertaining to partial four only.
The revision on G being that the flashing signs would be allowed on parcel four, but would be restricted on the other four parcels?
Correct.
That's what I understand. So I would second that. Is everyone clear to the motion? Okay, call for votes. Seeing all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So we have 12 ayes and one nay. Thank you. Next item is 4.3, PUD 2025-22.
Yes, once again, Brad Etherly, MAPD. We are now discussing case PUD 2025-00022. For this case, the applicant is requesting a zone change from SF5, single-family, and LC, limited commercial district, to PUD to create the Trinity Park Planned Unit Development, which would be PUD number 151. The subject site is 36.12 acres in size and is located on the northeast corner of South Hoover Street and West 47th Street South. The subject site is currently undeveloped. The applicant is requesting to create a, a single-family and duplex residential zoning district with non-standard setbacks, where no more than two dwelling units per lot would be allowed, with each lot having 6,000 square feet at a minimum. The site would consist of two parcels, and uses in both parcels would be limited to those permitted by right in the TF3 zoning district. The development standards for the TF3 district would be applied with four exceptions. The setbacks would be reduced, which is illustrated by the table in the report. The second exception is that with split dwelling units, which means two single-family units on one lot or a split duplex on a platted lot, there would be no more required interior side yard setback, provided that the units either share a common wall or maintain a minimum interior separation between buildings of five feet. Number three is that divided lots that are accompanied by a lot split shall not be required to maintain a minimum lot area, and divided lots accompanied, accomplished by a lot split shall not be required to maintain a minimum lot width. The required, or the requested setbacks all fall within the range that is allowed by the UCC to be administratively adjusted, and the building separation of five feet is greater than the three feet required by code. Any building separation would need to follow all building and fire code requirements regarding firewall ratings. The applicant has requested that parcels one and two would permit the future division of platted lots without the approval of individual lot splits in order to divide dwelling units into separate ownership. Staff recommends that this provision be removed and that lot splits be required when desired by a property owner. So in effect, the applicant is requesting a waiver of Article 6 of the subdivision regulations regarding lot splits. Staff has discussed this with the engineering division of the Wichita Public Works Department, and has indicated that permitting the division of lots without an approved lot split application is, is not a good idea for several reasons, and those are listed in the staff report. I don't know if we have staff from that department, I think that they were going to be available, but I'm not sure that they are. So if they are, we can, we can maybe see if they can be included. Parking within the PUD shall be provided in accordance with the Unified Zoning Code unless otherwise specified in the parcel description. Signs in parcel one and two shall conform to the Wichita sign code for the TF3 zoning district. If we can go to the zoning map. The character of the neighborhood is mostly residential and agricultural at this point. Properties to the north are zoned SF5 and are currently being developed or have been developed with single-family dwellings. Properties to the south are located in unincorporated Cedric County, are zoned SF20 and LC, and are developed with a single-family dwelling and agricultural uses. Property to the east, across the floodway, is zoned LI, limited industrial, and is developed with the Cedric County Public Works Yard. Properties to the west, across South Hoover Street, are located in unincorporated Cedric County, and are zoned SF5 and LC, are underdeveloped with agricultural uses. As far as case history goes, in 2002, the site was annexed into the city of Wichita, and in 2021, the SF5 portion of the property was platted as the Trinity Point Second Edition. The LC portion of the property is unplatted, and this would need to be platted prior to the issuance of any building permits. The subject site has access to South Hoover Road, West 47th Street South, and West 46th Street South. Wichita Transit does not provide service to the area. City services are, for the most part, in place, however, water mains might be required to be extended in order to serve the property. If we can go to the future growth map. The requested zone change is in conformance with the community investments plan. The map, as you can see, indicates that the majority of the site is appropriate for new employment, with some of it being appropriate for agricultural and vacant uses. New employment is defined as areas that likely will be developed with uses that constitute centers or concentrations of employment, primarily in manufacturing, warehousing, distribution, construction, research, technology, business services, or corporate offices. And certain areas, especially those in proximity to existing residential uses, higher-density housing and convenience retail centers likely will be developed. And agricultural and vacant is defined as areas that are undeveloped or used for agricultural production. However, the majority of the proposed PUD is already platted as residential lots, and so we believe that with the LC district also being there, that residential uses are perfectly acceptable for this location. As far as compatibility guidelines go, under the heading Development Pattern, Guideline 1A states that development should occur where the necessary supporting infrastructure and services exist, and the majority of this property is already platted with residential lots and infrastructure such as water and sewer such as water and sewer are installed. So we can go to the site pics. This is looking south into the site from 46th Street. Next slide. This is looking north into the site from 47th Street. Next slide. This is looking north away from the site, and this is a huge site, so I didn't get all different pictures of all these views, but they're, for the most part, pretty similar. Next picture. This is looking east away from the site, although technically it's really part of looking into the site as well, but you can see that there's, there's not much going, going east. Next picture. This is looking south away from the site on 47th. And I think we may have one more. This is looking west away from the site. I don't think there's, oh, looking west away from the site again, from across Hoover. So staff does recommend approval, subject to the provisions of the Trinity Park Planned Unit Development and subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. We did receive several public comments, which have been included in the staff report or were forwarded to you a couple of days ago, so that you could have them prior to the meeting. And with that, I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, Brad. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Warren.
Brad, just to the east of, on the photo right there, what is, are those white colored?
Sure, they look like sand traps. I believe technically it is part of a park. If you look just north here, this is like a little play, play area park. And technically, it extends, I think, all the way down, but essentially, it's just open space.
I think a bunch of trees were planted there about three years ago by city staff, because I think I helped participate.
I did look into it, because it looked like a bunch of sand traps.
Any other questions? Saying none, thank you. We'll now ask the applicant and/or agent to come forward. And you'll have up to 10 minutes for your presentation. Please give us your name and address for the record. Welcome back.
Phil Meyer with Baughman Company, 315 Ellis, agent for the applicant. So what we do have before you today is a PUD creating a two-family district that will have a combination of two-family and single-family in it. All of parcel A is platted today. It could be replatted in the future, but as it stands today, the contract purchaser plans on just using this plat as it exists. Sanitary sewer is constructed within throughout that whole subdivision today. Some of staff's concerns about the lot split come back to where sewer was built to. For example, it ends here, so there wouldn't be a direct connection for, you know, 27, a single-family house could have hooked into it, but as a duplex, it can't. So we're going to talk a little bit about staff's lot split requirement, but what we're planning today is to leave this plat in place as it is and use that and finish this water and streets within it. Then parcel two over here would need to be platted. That is what was LC zoning before. It would be a patio home development over here of, of some nature. I threw, I think that's what we're going to do, but that could be subject to change. I think the only thing that I would like to change this is to add some language to staff's recommendation on number four. So staff wrote it as, I wrote it to where we wouldn't have to do a lot split. Staff would like to have a lot split. When I say that, planning, I don't know if it was planning. I do know Public Works and Engineering was concerned about it for access to sanitary sewer and where we set water meters for two-family houses. It reads today, "A lot split shall be required for any future division of the lots within the boundaries of the PUD 151." I would like staff to give me a, I'm sorry, I would like Planning Commission to give me a little flexibility as I work through this with staff. And that I would like you to add, where it says, "A lot split," I would like to add, "or other approved process through City Hall," then go back to staff, "shall be required for any future division of lots within the boundaries of the PUD." That gives us some opportunity to find a simpler solution than going through a lot split. And I, I say that because this is my personal opinion. The lot split process is a very thorough process. It is time-consuming. There are so many of these duplexes being split today, where half a duplex is being sold to somebody as their home. It is the new starter home, and then they're selling the other half to somebody else. And I believe the engineering's concern is to make sure the sewer taps and the water taps end up on the correct side of the split. And I do this in other communities, too, and there's a, could be a simpler method I'd like to explore. So if you allow me that flexibility, we'll work with staff and work it out. With that, I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioner Aldrich.
Yep. Phil, I know there, some of the concerns has to do with special settlements and, you know, some of the extra costs that would be involved. Would that be something that your client would absorb? The cost of that?
Yes. If it's, yes. Any infrastructure for sewer, water, stormwater, drain, or streets will be our responsibility.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Anyone else from the commission? Saying none, thank you, Phil. We'll now ask for the, I'm sorry, Commissioner Warren.
Staff question. Are you guys comfortable with the wording of working together? Is that a good plan to get?
I was going to ask that as well, about the other process via City Hall. If that was clear enough, or needed to be local government, local government regulations, et cetera. We can work on that while we take public comment. Okay. Is there anyone from the public now who would like to speak to this item? Please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Hey there, I am John Bradbury. I'm going to put the arrow cursor right on my house. Looks like I'm number nine.
What's your last name again, sir?
I'm Bradbury. B-R-A-D-B-U-R-Y.
And what is your address, sir?
5108 West 46th.
Thank you.
Street South. Right there for y'all. Well, hey, I guess I, I'm speaking on behalf of myself and many neighbors that I've had conversations with over the past several weeks. But I, like many others, moved here because this is a single-family neighborhood. It's how it was presented to us. It's how it was sold to us by Karen Hampton, the wife of the builder, Mike Hampton. So at, at best, it's a bait and switch. At worst, I've been, you know, manipulated by my ignorance of how this planning and rezoning works. So thank you for the time to speak here today, as I'm, I'm learning as I go here. I, I do believe this request to change to single, or change to the two-family units will materially and negatively affect our neighborhood in several ways. And I mean, we can go down the list of, of the drainage and sewer. The school capacity is full. Higher density of, of traffic, you know, this is at a minimum probably doubling the amount of traffic. I question if 47th Street is going to be paved, because we already have plenty of traffic on 46th that I can speak to. Noise is an increase, crime. Home values will decrease. Insurance, if it's deemed a mostly rental neighborhood, will increase. But the two things that come back to me are what we were promised when we moved in and the traffic safety, as being a father of, of young children. I'm not opposed to housing in general. I can only assume this rezoning is an income-based decision. I am sure that there is still plenty of money to be made in, in single-family homes, which is what we expected. I have no argument against apartments, multiplex, duplexes, even trailer parks, or this Trinity Park that they, that they want to develop here. I think they all have a, a use in society, either by need or by choice. I just don't think it needs to be right across the street from where we were promised single-family homes. There was a child struck and killed on 44th Street last summer, where there's already too many cars driving too fast. Certainly, I hope that you can make the decision today. While I know that's an argument from emotion, there's a statistical certainty that that will be increased by doubling the amount of cars coming up and down our streets. And finally, we intend to use the legal protest petition process if you do end up recommending approval. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the speaker? Saying none, thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Okay. Good afternoon. My name's David Stockemer, S-T-O-C-K-E-M-E-R. Thanks for letting me speak to this today. I'm here to express.
Your address, please, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. My bad. 4693 South Doris Court. I am right here on this corner.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so I'm here to express some great concern of the proposed rezoning. I built the house here in 2023. There was nobody else on my street. I, too, was promised by the same people that John here was promised, that there would be single-family houses that looked similar around the same value as my own. It's quiet, and it's a great neighborhood. So I signed my contract for my house in 2023, after waiting years to make the right house. And directly after that construction began, the two cul-de-sacs to the north on Doris Court, right here, this entire block is all rentals now. None of these houses were here when my house was built. I was the first one. So that was a surprise. But they all look like my house. They're well taken care of by the single landscaping company, so right now, they look okay. Anyway, come to a merge with that. Anyway, so the, they're all rentals to the north of me now. So back to the duplexes that are pre-proposed. So there's more of them east of the floodway, north of MacArthur. They just built a ton of them up there last year. Those are all finished. And currently, they are building a large amount of duplexes right on the southeast corner, just across the street from the Dollar General. And that whole area is being developed with multifamily homes. I'm assuming that look exactly like what they're trying to build across the street from us, or down my street. So I do have some worries. The house value would be probably the biggest one. I moved away to get away from rental properties. Insurance cost, crime as well, car volume. Renters just don't seem to care about property the same way that a homeowner does. This is my family's dream home. We waited to find the perfect place. And, and like I said, I, I'm speaking for a lot of neighbors that are not here today, who feel the exact same way as me, and they disagree wholly with this. You know, we were hoping to have new neighbors, not twice the amount of neighbors. And I also express concerns on the 47th Street not being a paved road. And let's see, I, I guess in summary, I think there's enough duplexes in our area. I think, I think the school is already full. I think this makes it worse. And I also, you know, I hope that you guys will, you know, hear us out and deny the application and maybe build some homes that look a lot like ours. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Stockmeyer? Saying none, appreciate it, sir. Next speaker? Anyone else? Last call? All right, so we'll now ask the applicant agent to come back to the podium for rebuttal opportunity. You'll have up to two minutes.
Phil Meyer with Baughman Company, agent for the applicant. So when you, when we look at doing this, this two-family is going to be developed by the same individual that came up here and did these two cul-de-sacs. And I did drive by this and look at it, and it does look good. It's all maintained by one single landscape entity. They mow it, they take care of it. It's consistent in its look. That is what they are planning to do down here with this development, although it would be two-family. Two-family is the market we are in today. I know some people are tired of it. Some people are always concerned about it. But that is where the world sits today for starter homes. Some of these could be sold, but it will still be required to have the maintenance on it as a, as the HOA maintaining this. If the Planning Commission has concerns, you know, I guess I'm willing to look at or discuss, do we take these first eight lots here and leave those single-family? That's fine, we can do that. We're going to probably have some single-family throughout this development anyway, as we go through the process. There will be a combination of both. With that, I'll stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Warren? I'm sorry, your mic's not working again. You're simply talking too much, Chuck.
And a lot of our subdivisions, we worked through the last few years, we try to put where the, the dividing line is front to front, the, you put single-family homes as they sit across from other single-family homes. An area where you'd be willing to do that on the?
Yeah. This, this is what I recommend it. At the same time, if, if you, I would say, if you want to carry it to Doris Street, we're fine with that. I don't know that it needs to be carried east of Doris Street, but for anybody coming down this way and going out, we can do these lots here, single-family, and we can do the
So backing up.
That's a good question to ask.
Not for us.
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
Commissioner Aldrich.
Just basically a follow-up on Commissioner Warren's. Wouldn't that be handled during plating?
The?
As, as far as your single-family mix was?
No, it'd have to be done here.
So I think the PUD, we could do two-family everywhere. I think that the majority of it will be two-family, but there will be single-family mixed in with it.
Okay. And the other question I have, there's a lot of concern about paving of what's 147th. Would that be, what's, what's the, the requirements on that? Would that be something that you guys would have to pave or?
There's no requirements to date on 47th Street, so when that was, plat was originally done, with it being a dead-end road to the east and hitting the big ditch and going nowhere, there was not a paving requirement for 47th Street. I'm sure that will be revisited again as we go through the, through the process further.
Is that classified as a county road or a city?
It's a county road. It's an arterial road, but it's in Cedric County at the moment. It's not been annexed.
So unless that's annexed, and if it was done, it would only be required to do the county standards, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant agent? Saying, saying none, thank you, Phil. Phil? I was looking at Philip when I said Phil. Bring it back to the commission for consideration and discussion. Yes, Mr. Wadeo.
Sir, I think there was an outstanding question about the language. And I, in talking with staff, we're fine with it as long as, I think we want to adapt it, though, to say, instead of "or other approved process through City Hall," I think our preferences have "or other approved process through the city of Wichita."
Okay. Commissioner Zimbalman.
So I just want to make a comment. The Preyda Homes is going on right now. The lowest-priced house in the Preyda Homes is 200 to 225,000. The only way to get a house less than that is to buy half of a duplex. So everybody's kind of screaming about affordable housing this, affordable housing that. This is the reason that there's been a lot of duplexes built. It's for affordable housing, and it's getting harder and harder to make things work. So I know the owners that live up above that, I don't know if they were promised anything or if it was the same developer, but things change over time, and it's just the period we're in right now. but things change over time and it's just the period we're in right now.
Commissioner Warren?
Yeah, I'm going to move that we approve the request with a change that any lots that face out onto West 46th Street South between
Hoover?
Yeah, to Hoover Road to Doris. Is that, is that what that?
Yeah, that would be Doris on the east.
The, any of those lots that face north up to Doris would be single-family, if they, if they face single-family across some of them.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
What about the request, if I may, Commissioner Warren, the request by the applicant on general provision four regarding the language of the lot split or other approved process through the city of Wichita?
Yeah, I would include that in my motion.
Are you comfortable with that, Commissioner Miles? Okay. Any other discussion? Saying none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next case, four point four. Do we know if the applicant or agent has shown for this case yet?
I'm not aware that he has, sir.
Sam? Not seeing them? Okay. Staff is recommending denial. Even though the applicant is not here, we are still going to hear it, just so they have that opportunity. They may show up, they may not, but we are required to hear it. Sam, go ahead, please.
Good afternoon. Samuel Dietz, Planning Staff. Zoning case 2025 dash zero 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 four two is a request for a zone change from SF5 Single Family Residential to LC Limited Commercial. Subject site is generally located south of West 55th Street South and 650 feet west of South Seneca Street. It is point eight three acres in size and is currently undeveloped. The applicant intends to construct commercial use on the site, however, no specific use was identified. As you can see in the staff report, the development standards of the site would change based on this zone change request. However, compatibility standards would apply as a result of the residential zoning on all sides. The site would have to comply with screening and landscaping requirements as a result of the residential zoning adjacent to the property. Solid screening would be required along all property lines. The north property line, however, along West 55th Street South could substitute a landscaped street yard per the standards of the Wichita Landscape Code. In the, with the landscape code requirements, landscape buffer of one shade tree or two ornamental trees per forty linear, linear feet would be required along the east, south, and west property lines in addition to the solid screening fence. The site would have to comply with lighting and parking standards in section four of the Unified Zoning Code. Signage regulations would be modified to allow two signs along West 55th Street South and a total sign area of 206.4 square feet. The surrounding context of the neighborhood is a mixture of low-density residential and public uses. Properties to the northeast are zone TF3 Two-Family Residential and developed with two-family residential uses. Property to the northwest is zoned SF5 and developed as parkland. Properties to the east, south, and west are zoned SF5 and developed with single-family residential uses. Case history, the subject property is currently unplatted. Plating would be required prior to issuance of a building permit. No other zoning cases are associated with the property. The site has driveway access to West 55th Street South, which is a paved two-way arterial street with no sidewalks. There is no platted access control along the street. Wichita Transit does, does not provide regular bus service in the area. The site is served by municipal water and sewer. The requested zone change is non-conformance with either the Community Investments Plan nor the South Wichita Hayesville Area Plan. The Community Investments Plan identifies the area as appropriate for residential uses, areas that reflect the full diversity of residential development densities and types typically found in a large urban municipality. This proposed zone change is to allow commercial use, which would not be consistent with this future growth concept map. The proposed zone change also is not in conformance with the locational guidelines three C and three A, which state that small neighborhoods serving retail and office uses and high-density residential uses not located at arterial intersections should be limited to the intersection of an arterial and a collector's street. The site is along West 55th Street South, which is an arterial, but it is not at the intersection of a collector or arterial. The guideline three A states that accepted mixed-use developments, residential and non-residential development areas generally should be separate and distinct with appropriate screening and buffering to ensure compatibility among land uses while maintaining connectivity among uses. Required screening and landscaping per the Unified Zoning Code and Landscape Code are designed to provide that compatibility. With the South Wichita Hayesville Area Plan, this plan identifies the area as appropriate for residential low-density land uses. And therefore, this zone change is not in conformance with the plan. If we could go to the site photos, please. This is looking south across West 55th Street into the site. This is looking southwest across West 55th Street into the site. This is looking north across West 55th Street away from the site at the two-family residential area. This is looking east, away from the east end of the site. This is looking west, southwest into the site, along West 55th Street. And this is looking east along West 55th Street from the west end of the site. And this is looking southeast into the site, I believe. Oh, this is looking west away from the west end of the site. And that is all the photos. With that, staff did receive one public comment in opposition to their request. Based upon the information available at the time the staff report was prepared, staff recommends denial of the zone change request. However, should the MAPC approve a zone change request, it is recommended that the MAPC adopt alternative findings and approve the NR Neighborhood Retail District instead. It is the opinion of staff that this zoning district would be more compatible with existing surrounding development and would have less significant impacts. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Samuel. And Commissioner Dool?
Has staff had any contact with this applicant, particularly as far as notifying with this meeting or mailing something?
Staff did contact the applicant this morning, and the applicant indicated that he would not be able to make it to this meeting.
Commissioner Miles? I think your mic's not working, but
The DAB heard this, and what was their feedback?
I understand DAB four has heard it and moved to deny it. You were looking through your notes, so. And just to be clear, the applicant was at our last meeting and left before the hearing, so that's why it was deferred to this date. So any other questions for Samuel? Mr. Williams Bay?
Yes, Sam, could, could you address item number four? It says this recommended based on the There was previously a building there?
Uh, yes, the subject site did previously have commercial use at some point in time. It is unknown if that was, if it was non-conforming or if it was ever allowed as such. However, that use was demolished in either 2023 or 2024.
So we're not sure whether it was properly built or not, correct?
Yes, I believe that the building had been vacant for quite some time as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, saying no more questions from the commission, and we have not seen the applicant come through the doors, correct? Okay, we will allow any public comment. Is anyone here from the public wanting to speak on this item? Saying none, we'll move it back to the commission for consideration and discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to uphold the denial.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Miles to deny with a second by Commissioner High. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The denial is approved unanimously. No, it's approved, denied by staff, uh, report, by staff recommendations. All right, our last case, I believe. Christina?
Good afternoon, everyone. Christina Reese with Planning Staff here to present Zone 2544. The applicant is requesting a zone change from single-family to limited industrial. I will mention that a portion of the site is already zoned limited industrial, namely the southwest corner of the subject site. It's a little bit under 75 acres in size on the east side of North Hillside, south of K96. Subject site is currently developed. The requested zone change would permit more uses on-site than its current zoning. I will mention that residential is not allowed within this parcel should the zone change request be approved, either by right or with a conditional use. I pulled up some of the allowed uses per the Unified Zoning Code, and so that would include Fright Terminal, gas and fuel storage, manufacturing, warehousing, vehicle storage yard, in addition to several commercial uses. And then the development standards would change. There's a table in your staff report on page two that outlines how it would affect the minimum lot area, minimum lot width, and setback standards. Section 4C of the Unified Zoning Code requires compatibility standards for properties zoned multifamily or less restrictive when they are within 500 feet of properties zoned two-family or more restrictive. The subject site abuts single-family zoning on the south side. This does not apply to the single-family across K96 here because of the separation of the major highway. Normally, this compatibility setback is one, 15 feet plus one foot for each five feet of lot width over 50 feet. So when we go back to the table, it says 80 feet plus two feet of additional height, subject to compatibility standards. That's where these compatibility standards come into play. Screening shall be per section 4B of the Unified Zoning Code, where a six-to-eight-foot solid fence is required. The south portion of the site that abuts residential zoning is developed with densely populated matured trees along East Fork of the Chisholm Creek. So the existing landscaping can be substituted for the required solid screening fence. According to the Wichita Landscape Code, this landscape buffer must be at least 15 feet in width. The character of the neighborhood is a mix of commercial, industrial, and residential. To the north across K96 is a single-family and limited industrial and is undeveloped. To the south, you have a planned unit development number 88 and then single-family zoning. And so they're respectively developed with a medical clinic and single-family houses. To the east is zoned limited commercial with a community unit plant is developed with a youth camp. And to the northwest, we see LI as well in purple here, and this is developed with a fire station. And then across north side, north side, North Hillside Avenue, sorry, is zoned limited industrial and developed with an animal boarding facility. The subject site is not platted. Plating will be required prior to the issuance of building permits. One thing I wanted to emphasize here is that, you know, the, the East Fork or the Chisholm Creek runs along where you can see this very faint light blue line here that is a floodway by FEMA. So that is, I mean, I, I will let the applicant or the agent for the applicant, you know, elaborate upon the plating process, but if there's a floodway, it's basically impossible to be developed there. The subject site currently has access to North Hillside Avenue, which is a four-lane arterial with sidewalks on both sides. Skipping ahead to the conformance to plans and policies that have been adopted. The requested zone change is in partial conformance with the Community Investments Plan. When we look at the Wichita Sedgwick County Future Growth Concept Map that we see here, the, the map recommends the subject site is appropriate for industrial, which is in purple here. And then we have new residential in this brown color, new employment and residential employment, uh, new employment, sorry, is in dark brown. Residential and employment mix is a striped area here. So when it comes to the locational guidelines of the Community Investments Plan, one of the general guidelines states that industrial uses should be located in areas with good access to highways, rail lines, and airports. So not only do we have the K96 ramp over here, we do have the railway, or we do have the railroad, I'm sorry. Industrial and major commercial land uses that generate pollution, odor, noise, light, safety hazards, and high levels of traffic should be located away from residential areas and develop a screening, buffering, and site design features sufficient to mitigate adverse impacts. So as I mentioned earlier, the majority of the single-family houses will be buffered by the existing landscaping in the eastern fork of the Chisholm Creek, which is a floodway. Planning Staff is recommending approval of the zone change request based on the golden factors. I'm skipping ahead to the last one here, opposition or support from neighborhood residents. It does say at the time the staff report was prepared. I did receive those comments. I did receive some additional comments from the public that were first forwarded to you via email on Tuesday afternoon, and then I received an additional comment yesterday that was printed out and distributed to you guys on your desks. So with that, I'll go to site photos. I don't have money. So this is looking south towards the site. This is from K96, looking south. Next slide, please. And this is looking north away from the site on K96. And with that, I will stand for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any members from the commission have questions for Christina? Seeing none. Thank you. We'll now ask the applicant and/or agent to come before the commission. You'll have up to 10 minutes. Please give us your name and address for the record.
Phil Meyer with Baughman Company, agent for the applicant. Address is 315 Ellis. If I could, let's go to page nine first. You're doing great. I'm gonna go to nine, then I'll probably go backwards a little bit if that's okay. Page nine is the zoning map. Thank you. So this application does, there is some existing limited industrial zoning here. This application does rezone that. You heard staff say this is worth asking for limited industrial LI on SF5 and LI. I didn't know how and didn't want to determine where that line was and leave a gap, or we just went right back over the top of it again with that. I do want to point out the amount of a limited industrial zone here along the highway. And that, that is probably a more appropriate zoning district than single-family for up against the highway here. Now, if we could go back to parcel si- or page six, not parcel, page six. I do want to point out to Planning Commission and to the neighbors that are here today that we did build a buffer into this project. A hundred-foot buffer where it butts single family, platted, single-family lots. There we go. Thank you. So to date, if you looked at an aerial, there are houses built to this point right here and a street built to this point right here and turns and goes south. This part of this subdivision has not yet been built out. It is platted in place. Somebody could come in there and develop that. We built, that's a hundred-foot buffer here that goes along here, and it's a hundred foot from these lots. This is the last house that's there today. This is the last house that's there today. This area is full of trees. Our intent with this buffer is to provide the buffer to the residential lots to the south, so it's going to stay SF5. I did double-check this before I came here today. Our legal description excludes that 100-foot strip, so when the zoning ordinance gets published and they use that legal description, that buffer is built and in place for them. There were some questions about floodway that comes through here, and there is floodway and floodplain. The floodway, we typically put in a reserve. Thank you, there we go. So, the floodway is the red, the floodplain is the blue. We typically put the floodway in a drainage reserve. We'll probably put that whole area in there because there's not that much floodplain, not worth messing with. The floodway is just, for the economics of it, is not worth trying to develop. You could spend two years and you're, all you can do is move it. You can't get rid of it, and it's just not worth it. So, we'll plant that in a reserve when we go through the plating process. With that, I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Anyone on the commission have questions? Seeing none, thank you, Phil. Please stand by. Anyone from the public wishing to address the commission on this? Please raise your hand. Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, okay. Please go to the podium, give us your name and address for the record. You'll have up to three minutes.
Danella Edwards at 4628 East Norwood Lane. And I'm just gonna go ahead and read from the letter that I sent to the planning commission. Light industrial does not mean that it is harmless. It still poses environmental hazards contributing to poor health. Changing the zoning from residential to light industrial is going to generate more noise, more traffic, more pollution, both light and particulate matter. This unhealthy environment will be an eyesore literally in our backyards, seen from the neighbors' decks and porches, and decreasing the entire neighborhood property values. 20 years ago, when Coke generously donated some of their property to have Rainbow School built, followed by the Boy Scouts of America, the plans were to incorporate nature through design that would be both beneficial to the students and the neighbors. How about using that land in a way that will be part of the initial plan all those years ago? In addition, it would be great for Wichita if Coke Holdings would draw their attention to purchasing any of the many existing empty industrial buildings to expand their businesses instead of building new. Online search shows that there are at least 17 listings for sale right here in town. Thank you for your consideration.
Ma'am, ma'am, can you please show me, you gave us your address.
It's 4628 East Norwood Lane.
Using the cursor, can you point to on the map roughly where you're at? I see where Norwood is.
I don't see 16 on here, so. I think my, I think my husband, he's going to speak, he'll probably will show you, but I can't really see on the, on the map.
That's fine. And also, just to be clear, this is a request for limited industrial, not light industrial. There is a little bit of a difference. I just want to make sure everybody understands the, the language.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, what is?
It was explained by staff earlier, but we'll have the opportunity for the applicant to clarify when they come back for rebuttal. Next speaker? Next speaker? I saw raise hands.
I'm speaking.
Yeah, if you, this is your opportunity.
I'm surprised there was.
I know, that's why. Give us your name and address.
My name is Paul Corona. I live at 4410 East Norwood Lane.
So, roughly down the street from?
I got this letter from Coke, and it says something to the effect of Coke is asking for zoning change from residential to light industrial. This could affect the property values. Does that mean you guys are gonna reduce my taxes if they build around there? I'm serious. What, what are you guys gonna do in, in regards to that?
We don't have that authority.
Who does?
To reduce taxes?
Yeah.
City council or your county commission?
So.
Your city representatives.
So, we can go back and refer them to you and say, you have allowed this to happen, therefore, now we can get a.
You have not made a decision yet. We are still hearing.
Are you kidding? Approved, approved, approved. Are you serious? I, be honest about it. I mean, we're all gonna die someday, and we're gonna be judged on how we are as human beings. Seriously. Think about it. I quit. I'm done. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time. Any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, next speaker?
I'm Patrick Edwards, 4628 East Norwood Lane.
We are the second house, let me see if I can, on Norwood Street, right here, and we
have a few concerns with regard to the deer tunnel area. I understand there's gonna be a 15-foot barrier through here. There's a deer crossing sign here on Oliver, and a small pond there, a collection of rain, rainwater, that the deer would come by and walk down, and then the deer would walk, walk, walk down the Norwood Lane area. We've taken many movies of them. I have copies of them if anybody wants to see them. We've had friends that come by and they, we have a motion detector and, and a camera trap, and we've just taken lots of pictures of the wildlife. We have deer, and I haven't had any antelope, but we have raccoons and possums and all sorts of wildlife, wild turkeys. And we've had neighbors that their children have never seen them, but they'll happen to come by when the motion detector goes off, and they can go back there and look at them and say, man, that's really neat. I've had many neighbors talk about seeing the deer that come, come in the field also along here. People that are driving on Norwood or along I-35 would mention that to me. We're just concerned that the, the deer crossing here is also followed down, and that they're, that they're allowed to still have wildlife there. What I've done is not, doesn't constitute an environmental impact statement, but I can tell you it's been really, really nice. We moved out there in 1980, 45 years ago. We were the second house in the lot, and it's just been really nice to have nature and something nice for people to see. We, I want to thank the board because 20 years ago, when Rainbows came in, we had asked if we could get some kind of barrier between us, and you were nice enough to put one in, and we were able to keep our backyard and have barbecues and people over. We don't have to have the kids from Rainbows staring at us. We just like to make sure and maintain that. And also, I was concerned is where Norwood Street stops here. You said it's a dead end, and there's a possibility of future things being planted there. I hadn't even heard that. The, we're wondering if they're gonna use this as any kind of an entryway into this area that they're working on. We would really prefer that not happen.
Okay, sir, your time is allotted.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, the applicant can address your question with that, so.
No.
Next speaker?
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for the speaker I should ask first?
Get out of here.
Seeing none. Yes, sir.
Get me out of here. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been a really interesting process. My name is Sarah Jane Crespo. I live at 4504 East Norwood, which is like right around here-ish. And when I was thinking about buying the house that I'm in now, I was going through the neighborhood and like looking at it as I'm driving by, and this flock of wild turkeys was just like walking through the neighborhood, and it was like, this is it, this is the place. I think everyone who's in this neighborhood really appreciates how kind of tucked away and in nature it is, and how quiet, and what a little haven this neighborhood is. It's a beautiful, quiet neighborhood. When I take my dog on walks, we see like deer beds as we go by. It's a wonderful place. And I very much believe in win-win situations, and I believe in progress. And I am not very familiar with the different zoning, like categories and what they really mean. But I do think the devil's in the details, and what it means if this is rezoned from something that's on this end of the spectrum to something way over here is really concerning. And not knowing what would be here, like hearing like the possibilities of what's gonna land in this area, those are some kind of nerve-wracking possibilities. So, I think recognizing, as many of the other neighbors that I've spoken with also recognize that, that this could be kind of, it could, a lot of, a lot of like the natural elements in this area could be diminished, and, you know, I think that we can, there is a way to build and develop that also is cautious and has care for the world that we are around. So, I think what I, what I was going to stand up here and suggest, this gentleman already kind of spoke to, that this area of trees, the floodplain, if that could kind of formally not be tampered with, I think that's a great step in the right direction. That would be a nice bit of compromise there. If the, I don't know what, like if there's a legend with feet here, but like if this is about 100 feet, whatever that would be, but if the, if the natural elements here and tampering with the water, if that could kind of be avoided, I think that would be a huge, like a huge piece of compromise. That screen's really important. And then, I, like you guys know what's possible, I really don't here, but can we like add in any, any sort of like additions about the material, the runoff, the, you know, possible pollutants to this area when there is so much beauty here? What can be done? I don't really know what it is. Okay, that's it.
Yeah, that is your time.
Yeah, thank you very much for anything.
Any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you. Next speaker?
Hi, my name is Richard Hastings. I live at 4324 East Norwood Lane. It's like right here. The slide earlier was the fourth house down, so it was like right in the middle of that, so I think it's closer to here. I'm not gonna read too much more, they've kind of covered everything, but my personal end of, we just, I just moved in with my fiancee last year, and we were excited to build our lives together, and one of the things is the turkeys. It blew my mind when that happened, just seeing turkeys walk across the yard, and that's something that I'm really excited to show my future kids. And so, that's important, just keeping our neighborhood, it's very diverse with people in it and tucked away, it's been really nice. And then, the importance of like the Boy Scouts, just making sure, because I was a Boy Scout too, that that is kept preserved, because I could see the Boy Scouts like through my yard, from my porch, and see their activities they're doing, it's really important, and, you know, again, eventually, hopefully, my kids could enjoy that as well, making sure that's still preserved, so that's all I had.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you. Next speaker? Anyone else? Oh.
My name is Jan Maeve Sagerson, and I live at 3316 North Oliver. My mother is here, and our neighbor, Mrs. Malzahn is here as well. My, oh, we only get three, I thought we had 10, you guys. I'm so sorry. So, I think so far, our family has had the, been in the neighborhood the longest, so we've seen a lot of changes ourselves. We also have had effects to wildlife. I have seen the loss of, or decrease of fireflies. We used to have pheasant, we used to see owls, we used to see deer, more than what is now being hit on the highway. We've also seen a decrease in snakes, a decrease in bees, and eagles. I remember as a kid seeing a couple of eagles. Also, I went to Kissler Elementary, and we saw the first fuselage for the, for NASA on the train track. I don't know if you guys know where Kissler is, at 37th and Oliver, and we all ran out of school just to see that happen, or to see it travel, I guess, because we were learning about NASA at the time. I remember learning about the Milky Way and Cassiopeia, the constellation that is W, a W, the letter W in the, in the spring, and the letter M in the winter. We were taught this by both of our parents, but mostly by our father, who was a Boy Scouts of America as well, and he did that for most of my lifetime, if not all of my lifetime, so I know how to get east to west and north, north and south, and I also know my cardinal directions, as you recognize. We've also been there long enough to see physical changes to our land, so what used to be a rural route road, Oliver used to be a rural route number, we now have issues with water, the land holding water that it shouldn't have, and we also have, and it's clay soil, so that would be an issue. I know there's been a brown water issue as well. We've had a loss of tree, tree barriers between the park and the residence. We live east of Oliver and south of 96, so we've had issues with tree loss and butterflies as well, loss. And I think that's it. Mom, do you have anything you'd like for me to ask? We have 12 seconds.
12 seconds, thank you.
Phyllis, do you have any questions that you would like for me to ask? It's a wonderful place to live, and, I'm sorry, hold on. I want to capitalize on what Sarah said, which is, there's some kind of store to capitalize on what she said, which is, some spaces in cities, no matter how big or how small or whatever, we have to be thoughtful about what we are doing when it comes to calling something progress when really it's just change. The concern, yeah, is wildlife, but the other concern is just being able to maintain nature and having our children and our grandchildren, et cetera, et cetera, be able to have that exposure as well, because that's the legacy that we should all be thoughtful about when it comes to these types of decisions. Now, I'm not real sure, oh.
Ma'am?
I live over here.
You have exceeded your time.
I know, I'm sorry.
You're good.
But we're somewhere over in that area.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Oh, no, sorry.
Any questions for Ms. Stiverson? Seeing none, thank you. Next speaker? Anyone else? Last call? Thank you. Well, we'll turn it back to the applicant agent for rebuttal.
I'll try to answer some of the concerns the best I can, or what my comments would be for some of the concerns that you heard from the adjacent neighbors. So, first, I want to point out the buffer. I know that when we, and I happened to do this for Coke back when they did Rainbows and Boy Scouts, and this was also zoned here, which has not been developed yet, they were very concerned about maintaining or leaving a buffer to the neighborhood, and Coke offered that from the very beginning, stood behind that, did that. From the very beginning of this, they told me build that 100-foot buffer in here, so those trees are going to remain as they back up along here because of that. So, that is a buffer which will help on the wildlife. Our only, our access, not our only, our access to this property is going to come from Hillside, it's going to come from Oliver. This is a private road that was built in here. This is a private road that was built in here for rainbows and Boy Scouts of America, but it was built to city standards as a contingent street, so it could be dedicated as a street. That more than likely will be the location. We will have to put a street through there so that we don't go down to the south at all, because fire department and everybody else is gonna require that. But everybody's, the floodway goes through here. I've said that earlier, and I'll say it again, we will put that in a reserve. We will have to take a street across it, but that will be protected there, which will help with our concerns about the wildlife. We have no intention of connecting to Norwood, or do, we don't even want to connect to Norwood, not our goal. Drainage will be addressed during the plating process as we go through that, which also deals with the floodplain and the wildlife. It's a neat little area down there. I'm not gonna argue that, but I think the buffers we're building in helps. Thank you. I answer any questions you have.
Ma'am, ma'am?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, this is back, this is for his opportunity to rebut. You have anything else, Phil?
No, I don't.
Any questions by the commission? Seeing none, thank you, sir. We'll bring it now back to the commission for consideration and action.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve second for comments with the buffer.
We have a motion to approve subject to staff conditions by Commissioner Bill Johnson with the second. Was that Commissioner Warren? It was, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. That was our last item. We are adjourned.